We're going to call the meeting to order. Tonight is April 16th. It is 6:00 PM. We could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additional items for consideration for the agenda? I made a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I made a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 14th and the budget workshop of April 3rd.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to our district presentations. Right and quick, so we'll hand it over to Ms. Merk.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Renee Merk, Coordinator of SEL and Family Engagement, and I'm here to give a quick SEL update from April and share some plans for May. So, Mrs. Christi and I invited Sergeant Fiola from the Madison County Sheriff's Office to present internet safety to our high school students on April 11th. Sergeant Fiola has now met with every grade level at HCS to share information on internet safety and bully prevention, and we're really grateful for her partnership and her dedication to the time she spent with our students. Just today, I was able to take 11 students from Mr. Dowson Superintendent's Student Advisory Council to the Madison County Youth Leadership Conference in Casanova. It was presented by Bridges, and our students had the opportunity to practice leadership skills. They met other students from Madison County and set some leadership activity goals for next year. It was a great day. Tensey was actually there with me, which was wonderful. The next HCS Faces event is coming up at the end of this month. It's on April 30th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Our social worker, Elena Maine, will be presenting to secondary students and families about understanding and managing anxiety. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Bridges has provided us with a mental health awareness toolkit to share with our students, and this year, the track team will be partnering with the SEL team to share messages about the importance of taking care of our mental health. This will include using the toolkit to add a few activities in the lobby, sharing information in forum, and reading a book called Don't Feed the Worry Bug to elementary classes. Also, coming up quickly is the Teen Mental Health First Aid Program that our 10th graders will participate in. This six-session program teaches teens how to identify, understand, and respond to signs of mental health and substance use challenges among their friends and peers. 11th grader Brianna was part of the program last year, and she wanted to share these thoughts with you. She shares, "The teen mental health program at our school is seriously awesome. It made a huge difference for so many students, including me. The program had some helpful resources and support systems in place. It's important to prioritize mental health, and I'm grateful our school recognizes that." The teen mental health first aid program is something all schools should implement. This program saves lives and helps people in need. And Brianna was actually in a situation where she was able to use some of the skills that she learned to help someone in need, and she really appreciated the program. And finally, a Bigs and Littles mentorship update. So, this program matches secondary and elementary students to provide connection and develop relationships. And tonight, I invited 7th grade students Estellees and Evelyn, Senna, and Sky to join me. They're the Bigs, and Amber is here representing the Littles. So, these girls have been a part of the Bigs and Littles program over the past one to two years, and are shining examples of dependability and responsibility and great role modeling. And here are some of the things that their Littles have said about them. They've said, "She reads with me. I love to see her come in. She makes me happy. We do school stuff, and we talk, too. She comes in during writing, and I like to show her what I'm working on. She's my friend. She always shows up, and I really like that." So, in closing, if the board had any questions about the Bigs and Littles mentorship program from a student perspective, these girls would be happy to answer them tonight. Does anybody have a question?
I'd like to know what you're, what makes you the happiest being a big teacher?
It makes me happy being able to, like, help the students. And when I go in, it's like during the time that Amber has writing, so I listen to this board by teaching them, like, what they need to do, and then I can help Amber with their assignments, and that makes me really happy.
It makes me happy to, like, build a relationship with somebody else.
I guess the same thing as them. I also like being able to, like, spend time with the younger kids and be, like, trying to be a good role model for them, and set a good example, I guess.
I like being able to go out and enjoy my time with her because she's very sensitive.
And as a little, what is your favorite part about having a big?
Everything. We talked a little about it today, Amber and I. You were sharing about writing. Is Senna considerate of me? Were you able to share with her some of the things you're working on?
She helps me with my work.
Nice.
Thank you.
Is there anything you guys would add to the program in the future, or anything that is working really well that you want to continue, or any changes you would make?
I think just, like, being available for them and making sure we come down every time, just so they, like, can depend on us is, like, a great thing that we can continue for all three years because it, like, shows that we're dependable and trustworthy.
Do your, do your study halls remain the same throughout the year so that you can keep going at the same times down to see them throughout the year?
Yeah.
Nice.
Do you ever see your littles outside of school? And do you acknowledge them when you do?
Uh, well, yeah, since she's Sky's little sister, and I think I'm kind of, I see Amber a lot at Sky's house, yeah.
Do you feel like you have to be special nice to her?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I got to be nice to both of them.
I'm curious what motivated you to, like, when the signup came out, did you immediately, like, jump on it and say it's something you wanted to do, or did you think about it? And what, what enticed you the most about the program to want to be a part of it?
Um, I, I just really like little kids, and I love school, and just, like, helping kids with school, it's just, it's really awesome to me, and I love being able to do that. It sounded fun because last year, I didn't get the chance to sign up for it, so I, I really signed up for it, so I really wanted to do it.
Oh, nice. And you all have younger siblings, right? You just wanted more younger kids to attend to. You wanted younger siblings that they weren't related to. Yeah. Well, good, thank you guys so much.
Thanks for coming.
And for spending your evening here for, spending a few minutes of your evening. Because now, we will let you go home with you. You don't have to stay. Or you can stay. You're more than welcome to stay. You can leave, and it will be okay.
You do not need to.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Always fun when students come to our meetings.
It's part of it.
All right?
Yeah.
All right, consent agenda, on we go. I made a motion to approve a consent agenda. It's 5.1 through 6.1, as recommended by the superintendent. Now, hold on.
4.1.
Five?
4.
The numbers are wrong. Let's redo that. Nobody's first or second up. 4.1 through 5.1.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If anyone has a discussion, does anybody have a discussion? Okay, sorry. I got so confused on the numbers. That brings us to participation. It's a time for the public to come forward to the podium if you would like. Please remember the, um, the board's policy for being upfront, the timeline and such. So, if somebody would like to come forward, they're more than welcome to. We do ask it. At this time, we request that the community participation is for agenda items only, but it doesn't have to be.
How long do I have?
Three minutes.
Okay, that's good.
Oh, no, not more than five, sorry.
Your host talk is fast.
Bonus. A little nervous, so I talk.
Don't be nervous.
Um, so, my name is Kathleen Palmer. I live in Hubbersville, um, the farthest stretch in the district. That way. I submitted this letter to the Board of Education earlier. I just wanted to just come and read it, so it's on the record, and then, um, yeah, so I'll just do that. Um, and this is exactly what I sent earlier. Um, my name is Kathleen Palmer. I am a parent of three children currently in eighth, sixth, and first grade at Hamilton Central School. All three of my children have attended Hamilton Central School for their whole educational career, as well as attended pre-K with their current teacher. I am one of only, and I corrected, only 22 New York State Licensed In-Home Daycares in our school district, and have been licensed for almost six years, but have many years of experience caring for young children prior to entering the school system. I would like to submit this letter as a representation of my deep concern for the changes being made to the pre-K program at Hamilton Central School. While I understand that cuts need to be made and the budget constraints are very real, I believe it would be absolutely detrimental to the youngest of our students with this plan of moving the current pre-K teacher to a different grade. We know as parents that we always want the best for our children, and one of those things starts with a safe, trustworthy place of care, whether it be at home with a parent or caregiver or an in-home daycare, daycare center. It is important that we provide the best for our children. I believe as a daycare provider, there's a significant relationship with a child attending daycare and moving on to pre-K with a teacher with so many years of experience. In my opinion, taking that away would be detrimental to these young children and their development. This may not be evident right now, but could potentially be problematic for the students in the future. My job as a daycare provider requires me to spend five days per week and up to 10 hours a day with children ranging from ages six to weeks to four years old. I can attest to the fact that so much information is retained in their little minds at this young age, good or bad. I feel that replacing the current pre-Take, pre-K teacher with someone with potentially less experience, less knowledge, and a larger class of three to four-year-olds would be overwhelming, not only for the students but the teacher as well, and have a negative effect on their ability to learn the standards that are set by the New York State school system. Pre-K is the first experience for these children in this building and provides them with access to learning not only ABCs and 1-2-3s, but instills an ability to manage their feelings, learn with play, becoming accustomed to routines, managing social interactions, and so much more. When you work with children of ages three to four years old and younger daily, the bonds and relationships you build with them is not just with the child, but also their family. It is critical that the child can trust the teacher, but also be trusted by their parents or caregivers. I have provided care for many children that have come to my daycare as infants or toddlers. I watched them grow with me before they moved on to pre-K in Hamilton. The days, weeks, and months, and many times years I spent with these children is often overlooked, and at times can seem insignificant by parents and adults, but can have a great impact on their lives and futures. There's no greater pride for me as a daycare provider than to walk the hallways when I come into school for my own children and hear, "Hey, Kathleen," or a hug from a child that is now a big kid and attending school. The priceless relationships I have built with my daycare children and their families as they outgrow daycare and I pass them on to pre-K is something I value tremendously. I am so grateful for the current pre-K teacher, her compassion, dedication, and willingness to go above and beyond to make sure that her kids are ready for kindergarten. For many years, the pre-K teacher and I have had a great connection with the children who attend pre-K in the morning and the ride of buses to my home in the afternoon. We both care about the children so much and use different avenues of communication to help ease parents' anxiety associated with the big step of starting their school career. She has so many years of experience, and the kind, loving, caring heart of this individual is unmatched and, in my opinion, irreplaceable. Administrators and Board of Education members, as you're making these difficult decisions of where to place funds, alter the current school budget and plan, I ask that you take a moment to think of your own child, grandchildren, a niece or nephew, or maybe one of the students you currently have in classes here at Hamilton Central, regardless of their age, and think about when they started school and the experience they had. Was it, it was kind of a big deal for everyone, right? Think back, remember, you trusted the entire Hamilton Central School staff, most importantly, the pre-K teacher who helped guide them through the many things they needed to be successful at school at three to four years old. All parents need to trust their child's very first teacher who cared for all those little students at that special time. We all need to provide consistency for them right now. Most importantly, as administrators and Board of Education who represents Hamilton Central School, it's essential that you make sure stability is being provided to the youngest students in our school district. These little students need trust, need consistency, and need stability at this young age to be successful well into their future. Thank you for your time.
Wow. I had no idea it was that long.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
I brought her here on purpose, and I'm sorry I haven't lost my voice, my name is Erin Hanley, this is all of mine. She's also pre-K, well, starting in September, hopefully, but I just came because, obviously, we live in a small town, and there's a lot of talk about all of this, and I feel like the school could definitely use some communication to the parents about what the plan is, because I heard that the teacher's leaving and, um, and that, that there might be someone replacing that teacher that you guys already have in mind. I feel like we need that reassurance that our kids are in good hands, someone that knows what they're doing with all these little children. Amber's in speech therapy right now, and so maybe, I'm afraid she's going to get behind already, and, um, but also the school districts and the surrounding areas, a painful day. I worry that she's going to be even further behind than other kids. But, um, I was talking to my family about this. I'm from Oswego, her dad's from here, born and raised here, and I always loved having the small-town feel and the kids safe on the sidewalk and no traffic and crime, but, um, you know, there's a lot of disadvantages I worry about. We're already talking about the disadvantage of her being in a pre-K large class, different teacher, new teacher, but I'm also worried about, like, sports and stuff like that, opportunities for her. We went to the musical recently, and it was phenomenal. I was very impressed by the production, so it's nice to see that the arts are super-supported. But my dad even mentioned, like, and my brother mentioned, like, the school districts that they live in, you know, there is a fee for the kids to go there to keep that program going full day. I work at Colgate and almost at a dance class, and we've been talking that, like, CNS, which I cannot afford, but CNS, um, still charges a full day. I can see those parents would be willing to pay for, um, pre-K, only against Social Security because her dad's retired, and so, like, we can afford some money towards pre-K. I don't know, obviously, that's probably not a solution for her, but kids going forward. I wanted to present that to you guys as, as maybe there's other options out there that parents would be willing to, um, support if that's the case, or even, I heard that there's alumni out there that support the arts, and I don't know if they'd be willing to support a pre-K program here because we're in such a small community. So, I just wanted to let you guys know, and she's such a social kid, and she really needs some kind of pre-K. She sees the school bus go by every day, and we were toying with different options to support her needs, and I don't want to tell her she's not going to be able to go on that school bus next year because she's so excited for it, so, but we also have to look out for her best interests as well, so, um, but thank you, I just wanted to tell you guys that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. There are no comments online at the moment, so we will move forward, nobody else is standing up. That brings us to new business. And there are resignations, I will read them individually. I made a motion to accept the resignation of Shelby Penner, teacher aide, effective April 2nd, as recommended by the superintendent, with sincere appreciation for their, for their services as rendered to the district.
Move. Second.
Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
I made a motion to accept the resignation of Devon Clyde, math teacher, effective June 30th, as recommended by the superintendent, with sincere appreciation for services rendered to the district.
Second.
Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
I made a motion to accept the resignation of Chris Alsop, science teacher, effective July 1, as recommended by the superintendent, with sincere appreciation for services rendered to the district.
Move. Second.
Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
I made a motion to approve the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Linda O'Keefe as an OA2, effective June 27, 2025, next year, as recommended by the Director of PPS and the Superintendent. This approval is with sincere appreciation for sincere, for services rendered to the district and well wishes for retirement when the time comes.
Second.
Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
I made a motion to approve Sonia Ferner as a long-term substitute, effective April 17th through June 13th, as recommended by the Director of PPS and Superintendent.
Second.
Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Onto donations. I made a motion to accept the following monetary donations with sincere appreciation and to increase the budget by these amounts as recommended by the Business Manager and Superintendent.
Second.
Thank you to the First Baptist Deacons Fund and the Hamilton Central School PTO. All those in favor?
Aye.
I made a motion to approve the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Education.
Move.
Second.
Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
I made a motion to approve the destruction of the ballots, blank and completed, from the 2023-2024 budget vote election, as recommended by the District Clerk and Superintendent.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I made a motion to approve the 2024-2025 non-public transportation request per the April 1st deadline, as recommended by the Superintendent.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
For the annual, just making sure I didn't skip any, um, for the annual school budget vote board elections, inspector and chairperson, I made a motion to appoint the following for the annual school budget vote election Tuesday, the 21st of May, as recommended by the Superintendent.
I'll move. The second.
Any discussion? Thank you to everybody for doing this. As always, we appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
I made a motion to appoint Cory Duplos as the Chairperson for the annual school budget vote board election on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
No discussion?
No.
Thank you, Cory.
I need to bring a chair, or is there one in line?
No chair needed.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for doing your work. Thank you. Um, we'll turn this right over to Matt.
Thank you. The next two agenda items are, are sort of length, as you know, and following along with our, our process here and our upcoming deadlines with regard to the budget. Locally, not much to report. If you recall, last week at the, at the workshop, we had received some news just prior to that, that we had received some good news from Colgate. With that good news, I think we can disclose more details now. So, they notified us that they would be giving us additional funding for the 2024-25 school year to help us balance our budget. That will be a one-time payment in the amount of $65,000 in addition to their existing voluntary payment. So, first and foremost, you know, on behalf of Bill and our team and everybody really here at HCS and our, our whole community, we want to thank Colgate for stepping up. As you know, they're always very interested in, in what we're doing here. They understand how important we are in their ability to attract and entertain families to this area. We certainly understand how important they are to this community, so it, it really is a partnership. We are in, in conversations with them frequently. They're very interested in what's going on here, so we want to thank them for, for stepping up and, and being willing and able to help us determine what was a difficult process. So, if you recall last week, the workshop, we were a little over $100,000 away from the tax cap compliant, so combining the $65,000 from Colgate, a slightly, slight bump to the amount of our restricted reserves that we're going to be able to draw down on and sort of, sort of sharpening our pencil. The, the current budget draft that's been presented for adoption is tax cap compliant, with a tax levy increase of 4%. It is a budget-to-budget increase or expenditure increase of 4.32%, and no additional changes to any of the programming or staffing that was presented at the workshop on April 3rd. We did have three budget coffees following that budget workshop last week. They were not, not real heavily attended, but we did get some interest, some feedback, and I think people were generally satisfied in the explanations and the reasoning behind the changes being made that were provided by the team, so I know most of you were at one of those, so, I think all, all it's good news. I, I do have to caution, throw out some caution, and Jen, again, this will probably be the last time that I steal your thunder. Still a lot of uncertainty regarding the state budget, which is really making things challenging for school districts across New York State. A number of school districts across the state have already adopted their budgets. Many, most, I would say, are doing it tonight because of the districts having their board meetings tonight because of the VOSEs, there's things to be done. There was news that came out today that the, there was an additional extender that was extended through yesterday, and there was some, I don't know if you want to call them leaks, or some, some hints at what was coming in regard to the state budget. However, none of the details are, have been presented yet, and we don't know when those details are going to come. And when I talk about details, what I'm really referring to are the, the state aid runs that tell each individual school district what their aid amounts will be in '24, '25. Some good news is that the agreed-upon budget by all indications will have, will reinstate the whole harmless provision, so no district will receive less foundation aid in '24, '25 than they are currently receiving in '23, '24, which is good news for us. If you recall from the Governor's proposal, we were to see a 1% decrease in our foundation aid, which is about $37,000. So, that whole, whole harmless provision gets reinstated, as it has been in recent years. However, there's still a lot of uncertainty on whether or not there will be minimum aid increases for However, there's still a lot of uncertainty on whether or not there will be minimum aid increases for school districts. So the different advocacy groups are speculating on whether or not there will be minimum increases for all school districts. This budget draft has a 3% increase for us, which is roughly under $12,000. If that whole harmless provision is reinstated, but there are no minimum increases, and any district that was going to see a decrease in aid under the Governor's proposal is essentially frozen, and that would mean obviously a shortfall for districts like us if they've budgeted for an increase. There's also talks of, in the current formula, there's an inflation, inflationary factor built into the existing formula. The current statewide rate of inflation is a little over 4%. There's been some rumblings of the adopted budget reducing that inflationary factor from 4.1 to around 2.8%. So what that would mean is, anybody in the Governor's proposal that was going to see an increase, their increase would be lower than what was in that Governor's proposal by that inflationary rate being decreased. Does that mean that those people are going to get less than the increase they thought they were going to get in order to fund minimum increases for everybody else? Nobody knows. So we won't know that until the details come out. When those details come out, we don't know. Bill and I and the team have discussed at length, and I think I may have mentioned this at the coffees, unfortunately, anything, I don't think the news is going to be better than what we currently have proposed in front of you. So it's only going to be worse. So our recommendation is to, with the uncertainty, is we've, we're obviously recommending this draft for adoption tonight, with the understanding that we may have to make some changes on the fly or at the very least be very conscious of fiscally within the next year or so if the news out of state's not so good. So that's where we're at. I don't remember the order, I think the budget is first, and then the property tax report card. So this property tax report card is due from all districts in New York State by April 29, but it's due to be submitted, I think it's within 24 hours after the board adopts the budget and takes action on the report card. So the form that you see correlates to the proposed budget, and that will be submitted accordingly. So would that all open it up to any questions?
If we do end up with less?
Yeah.
Does that mean we need to get back together to do something else for a lower, or for a change? Or, once we adopt this?
Not necessarily, no. You could, but, I mean, we have, we have factors that influence the budget every year. I mean, that's a given. Typically, as long as the state budget is on time, the revenue side of things are pretty secure, right? We know what we have coming in. It's the expenditure side where we can see big fluctuations based on student needs, based on changes in enrollment, in offerings, most, most commonly student needs. So this is a little bit different because it's on the revenue side of things. If we end up finding out we don't have as much money coming in as we had budgeted for, we're just going to have to watch things more closely and monitor that future school year. So I don't think at this point it's so significant that we would have to reconvene and consider more drastic measures. Is that fair?
We still have work to do internally. You, we're asking you to adopt a spending plan. Internally, we still have work to do on delivery of services and the internal structure of what that will look like next year.
Question for Matt, for both? Thanks.
Thank you again, and I want to thank the team, I want to thank the, you folks, Bill, our support staff, our faculty staff, the community that came out. I mean, we had a number of opportunities for the community to provide input, and they did. And I think the team really listened and made some difficult decisions with that feedback in mind. So I want to thank everybody that was involved in the process.
What I want to thank Matt, you know, this is, I think you can feel and hear the uneasiness about this whole process and how difficult this has really been. We're trying, I've said this a number of times, we're trying to plan a budget with so many uncertainties. We still don't know what we're getting from the state. And we're trying to plan a budget and deliver services to our community that are expected and deserved and we want. And this has been a really difficult process, and Matt has felt a lot of pressure, this administrative team has felt a lot of pressure, our entire school community, our faculty and staff have felt a lot of pressure. There's a lot of anxiety, there's uneasiness. It's not a comfortable position to be in, but we've done our best.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all, publicly again, thank you, Colgate.
Yes, thank you very much.
That moves us to a motion, a motion to adopt the 2024-2025 proposed budget with the expenditure plan not to exceed $15,672,71, which is included all projects, projected BOSI services. Move.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to approve the 2024-2025 property tax report card as provided and as recommended by the Business Manager and Superintendent.
Move.
Okay, discussion there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here's some more study. I need a recommend action, resolved the Hamilton Central School District of the 2024-2025 tentative administrative budget of the Madison Oneida Board of Cooperative Educational Services in the amount of $7,290,325, funded by $1,240,840 in expense by components plus $6,49,485 in earned interest and other miscellaneous revenue. And shall so allocate as a contingent expense its share of said administrative budget as apport-
Aportioned.
Aportioned in accordance with Section 1950 of the New York State Educational Law.
I'll move.
Second. Thank you for not making me read that again. Any discussion?
Could you repeat that?
No, I don't think I can. I didn't even mix the numbers up in the next one. It's like, repeat, repeat, repeat. That was just a test, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this one's longer, bear with me. Board resolution, seat currently held by Douglas Guston of Canastota Central School District. Resolved, the Hamilton Central School District Board of Election of Education authorizes the clerk to submit and certify its ballot in the name of Douglas Guston of the Canastota Central School District to serve as a member of the Madison Oneida Board of Cooperative Educational Services of the Sul supervisory district of Madison Oneida Counties for the term of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027, for the seat currently held by himself. I'm not reading all that. The ballot will be submitted to the clerk at Madison Oneida BOSI's on April 17, 2024.
I'll move.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I get to read that, two more. Board resolution, seat currently held by, to myself, our Hamilton Central School District. Resolved, the Hamilton Central School District Board of Education authorizes the clerk to submit and certify its ballot in the name of Chris Alman of the Hamilton Central School District to serve as a member of the Madison Oneida Board of Cooperative Educational Services in the Sul supervisory district of Madison and Oneida Counties for the term of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027, for the seat currently held by Michelle Jacobson of Hamilton, New York. The ballot will be submitted to the clerk of Madison Oneida BOSI's on April 17, 2024. Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board resolution, seat currently held by Joseph Montfaleto, Stockbridge Valley Central School District. The Hamilton Central School District Board of Education authorizes the clerk to submit and certify a ballot in the name of Joseph Montfaleto of Stockbridge Valley Central School to serve as a member of the Oneida, Madison Oneida Board of Cooperative Educational Services of the Sul supervisory district of Madison and Oneida Counties for the term of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027, for the seat currently held by himself. The ballot will be submitted to the clerk of Madison Oneida BOSI's on April 17, 2024. Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold on.
This one's short.
I should have brought water to me. I need a motion to approve the pay schedule for 2024-2025 as proposed and as recommended by the Business Administrator and Superintendent.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Policy team, your turn.
So a lot of these policies are mostly some minor changes. We, there was some stuff up for me as the board, which I think was mostly minor changes, but also did help us remember some of the things we needed to be doing. So we made some changes to our policy committee based on our policy review of the policy committees. But I don't think there's anything majorly, big changes there. The modification is a new policy, but that fits what we've been, our practice currently as well. Educational neglect.
So this only has one page? It says one of two?
Page two is missing, but it's only the footnote that's missing on page two, but that should be included.
Okay, perfect.
The law, right? With the law reference?
With the references to the law, yes.
This is new, right?
No, this one's not new, but we didn't have any changes to this one. I don't, I don't believe this is new, so. Yeah, I did check, it's not new.
Okay, so we're not, yeah, we don't have any changes. Maybe we don't have the second reading then, but we're reviewed.
For... 8002 is the guidance program policy, also no changes there. 8603 is their response to intervention policy. Just some grammatical changes for clarity, but no changes of substance there.
And it seems like a short, almost pointless policy, but we have to have a policy to have the regulation. And that's where a lot of the, and it makes more sense to have that in the regulation managed by Bill and his team directly, so. That's where we meet in that.
And then 3012 is included in this list because that's getting removed, replaced by 2047, which was the first one Corey talked about. That's it.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I love that we're still plugging along and getting through a good handful of these each month, so I really appreciate the time that you guys put in.
Thank you.
I know it's a lot of work, but then you really have to be like in it and focused, and so.
Well, Julie's made the process a lot easier for us too, so she deserves a lot of credit for the work that you did.
Thank you, too.
Anything else on policy regulations? Okay, Superintendent's report.
So in addition to my written report, I just want to give an update on APPR. There's finally some movement from the state. The said Education Committee, in a unanimous vote this morning, is allowing more flexible option for conducting APPR. So we, with the HTA President and her team, have been meeting with the administrative team, we've had four meetings, to look at our current APPR format and make changes to that. The state, it's a bill that has not been signed, but at least there's unanimous agreement on both sides of the aisle, and the Senate Education Committee has approved moving forward with some changes to give districts more local control over the APPR process. So we have been, we've looked at a couple of different models. We're looking at our existing contractual language and reverting back to moving the APPR model more towards goal-oriented in professional development. So it's more meaningful for both teachers and administrators to move the district forward in teaching and learning. So we're working through that process, and hopefully the bill is 47 pages long. I have it here, I've not had a chance to look through it. It just came through at 3 o'clock, so I'll be sharing this with the APPR Committee and moving forward with necessary changes to implement a new APPR format that really works for HCS. So it's good news.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else on Superintendent's report? Anything for the administrative team? Thank you all for submitting.
Thanks.
Athletic questions there? Do we have a Business Manager report on top of what you just gave?
No.
No. Thank you. Your turn.
I won't spoil it today.
No, look at that.
So I believe I actually already talked about this to some of you guys, but today's, my report is a land acknowledgement. Recently, SSAC had the opportunity to speak with a representative of the nearby Oneida Nations regarding the creation of a land acknowledgement for HCS. Our conversation was brief but informative in helping us structure ideas for a land acknowledgement here. At the bare minimum, we want to include a statement that can be found easily on our website and located conspicuously within the school. However, I believe that we have both the ability and responsibility to go beyond this. As a school, education is obviously our main priority, so we should use our platform as a school to expand knowledge about the history of our area to our student population. Currently, acknowledging the history of indigenous peoples is relegated to being a footnote as part of global or US history, something the Oneida representative pointed out to us. However, we should be expanding the knowledge of our local history as much as possible. Additionally, hearing directly from representatives, Oneida or otherwise, would be a more engaging and respectful way for us to learn as a district. This could also be a great opportunity for bringing a speaker directly to the student body. We could also take field trips to the Oneida Nation, we'll talk about that in a second, to learn about how they live today and hear about the history while standing on their lands. These are just some examples of what we could do in the future to properly acknowledge this crucial part of our history. I understand that currently the district's attention is focused elsewhere. However, I believe this is an important objective for us to have going forward. A land acknowledgement is a legacy-defining step in some ways, so I believe we should not simply take performative measures or forget about this after a few years. Instead, we should be making a sustained effort to learn, understand, and respect the history of Hamilton, New York. So just as, a few extra notes, tomorrow SSAC is going on a field trip to Oneida, to the Oneida Nations, to, I guess, go check things out and, I guess, begin thinking about land acknowledgement even more, because I guess the responsibility is on us. Also, there was something else I was going to say. We were talking about cooperating with the Oneida Nations more, just overall, and building a relationship with them, which is something they seemed open to be doing. And they have done, like, with other colleges and even high schools around us. So I think it's something we should look into.
So tomorrow, we're going to tour the cultural center and meet with some nation elders and start the conversation on how to develop a land acknowledgement and what that process looks like for HCS. And then, as Tinsay just mentioned, kind of opening the door for future field trips. And then, as Tinsay just mentioned, kind of opening the door for future field trips, assemblies, to try to bring some cultural awareness from the Oneida Nation into HCS. So first step tomorrow.
So they'll kind of discuss with you, you know, how to implement a program and then how to have it be an enduring project or process that people can use for years to come?
And also ensure it's not just a simple statement that we use once or twice.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Like, you don't want to just, yeah.
So I'll give an update on that next one.
Okay.
Very exciting.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great work. Thank you.
Good work. Anything else? No? All right. The SCAL report we had? Making sure that there was nothing else? We had that already? So that moves Elementary Steering Committee in next.
That's neat. This, last month, we had a member of the Elementary Student Council give an update about all the things that they've been doing this year, so that's always fun to hear. It was just to hear them speak about all the things that they're doing. Then Mrs. Latella came in, and this, she was talking about the character at assemblies that they've been doing and how important those are, and the awards that they get now quarterly in the elementary school, that kind of, you know, so for the whole quarter, you know, that students have to model the, the, the trait that they're focusing on that month, and then they get no more for it, the ones that represent that. That's kind of fun. And she also talked a lot, which I thought was really interesting, about all the collaboration that they do at Colgate, at the Cove, and how, I didn't realize how many students really push into classrooms to help support learning, and the teachers. I think she mostly oversees coordinating all of these students that come at times when it's appropriate for their, or for the teachers when they're needed, and then for the students, so they push into the classrooms. And teachers can just request them, and then they kind of work out the scheduling. And I thought that that's a really good and creative way to use our resources up there to help support education. So she does a lot of that oversight, which is kind of amazing. She also talked about taking more field trips or maybe coordinating more, like Tinsay said a few months ago, like coordinating more field trips up to Colgate to do, you know, geology, go to the museums, the Houghton Lab, to see some of that. We also got a preview of Cornelius Minor's parent message that went out over Parents Square, and he's always nice to listen to. So that was good. And then we just talked about the science and technology night that's coming up next month, and how that's all getting planned. Everybody's looking forward to that, so. That's, I think, I don't think I missed anything. Did I?
Lots covered. Thank you. Secondary.
So I was unable to attend the meeting again. I looked at the minutes, and it looks like it went over cell phone survey?
Yeah, so the survey that Mr. Ryan sent, I believe it was over the past summer, before the beginning of this year, we looked at the student survey, the teacher survey, and parent survey, looking at, making any other questions, either different questions you wanted to see in hopes to send that out to get feedback from this year.
Inclusivity Committee.
Inclusivity Committee. We haven't met since the last board meeting, but Amy Coens from the MOG Regional Data Center has been working tirelessly on putting together drafts of the climate survey. And those drafts have been sent out to committee members, I'm looking for Chris, and the feedback for that, for those drafts have, should have been back by the 15th yesterday. So everybody working sort of outside of the meetings, and the next meeting will be at the end of May, I think.
Great. Well, thanks for all the out of meeting time people are spending. Advocacy update.
A lot of the advocacy has been revolved around the budget and the extensions, and so not a ton. We do have the resolutions kit that was sent out, so if there's any resolutions that we want to propose for NISBA, we have till July 12th, so we can always work on that this summer. If anybody has any ideas, send them my way, and we can work through that. That's really it.
I just wanted to also, in this plug, they did, I know last year this was available, there was a NISBA Leadership in Education event, and there's, they're doing it again this year. I don't know if they've done it multiple years before this, but I noticed it last year and this year. July 19 through 20. We got an email about it from NISBA, but I can forward it to anybody who needs it, but I, I think I might go, I know January is just the last year.
Yes.
So it seemed like a good event. Similar to the convention, but maybe fewer sessions, but more specialized presenters, so.
I'd be interested in that as well.
It's in Albany, it's, you know, Friday, Saturday, so.
I am not available this year, unfortunately, but I was very interested in going, so I'd love if, if people are able to go and could go and bring back. Be great. I'm available Friday, but not Saturday.
So board update. Tonight is a reminder that petitions have been available for the Board of Education candidates. If you had not done so and planned to, your time is running out, so please see Jody for the petition. Petitions are due back to the clerk on April 22nd. There is a public budget hearing on May 14th at 6:00 PM. If needed, we will have a meet the candidates night directly after. And May 21st is the vote from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and I say that because a lot of people think that it's an all day, and it's not, it's just 12 to 8:00. And that will be held in the bus garage. Any questions there? Opens the floor for community participation. Please remember the policy and come forward if you'd like. See nothing online at this time. Thank you to those who are watching. Seeing nobody jump at it, I will move on to the next page that I can't get to. We will not be voting when we come out of executive session, so we will not be coming back online. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the matters regarding the employment of particular individuals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll take a five minute recess.